Hi, welcome everyone to the Tuesday, October 28th, Meeting of the Stowe Select Board. Is there any public comment? Is there anyone online? I know, we all saw everybody last night at a town meeting, so. Quick one. Alright, so no public comment, any board member updates?
No.
No?
No.
Hector? Nothing? Alright, great. Town administrators' report.
Oh, yes, hang on, sorry. I have to shut off the waiting room. Okay, for all of the masses here. So, obviously, we had two very large events in the last week, so I have a lot of people to recognize. I want to start by thanking everyone who came out to Stow case last week. We estimate we had over three hundred and fifty attendees, it was a really great night. I would like to thank our amazing facilities crew, Sean, Keesha, and Courtney, who helped with the setup, the breakdown, and pretty much everything in between, running around, setting up tables, and filling up candy bowls, and serving cider, and it was great. Thanks to Jackie Goring, Jeff Beharrell at Robert Maynard, and Megan Birch-McMichael for their help with the setup. Thank you again to Jackie, Robert, Valerie Ortiz, and Chief Evers for their help with breaking everything down at the end of the night. It really helps when we have a team setting up and breaking down. I want to say thank you to Joyce for all her work behind the scenes, especially with all the social media posts. Thank you to all the COA volunteers for all of their work organizing all of the leftover items for next year. They've already sorted it and counted it and stacked it and put it all away, which is fantastic. And finally, I want to thank my planning team partners of Gigi from the Council on Aging and Laura in Recreation, who put in countless hours with me to get this organized. We started planning this very early this year, and I felt like we were meeting on a weekly basis to just make sure we had everything covered. So, I just want to thank everyone, definitely seemed like a huge success, and look forward to continuing this for years to come. Onto special town meeting. So, once again, thank you to our amazing facilities team, Sean, Keesha, and Courtney, who came in to help with the setup and then helped break everything down. Thank you to Robert, Lisa Lavina, Stowe TV, the Town Clerks team, our moderator, and all three hundred and ninety-one voters who attended. It was great to see so many people turn out. I also want to recognize the work of the Planning Department and the Planning Board on the three A MBTA zoning articles. I know there are people in town that are not happy with the articles passing, or not happy with the location identified. But in my opinion, the members of Planning did a tremendous amount of work. They did a lot of outreach. They spent countless hours looking at different locations and finalizing where they were going to locate this. And I truly believe they did everything they could to make sure voters were informed ahead of time. I will say, I personally took a little offense to the comments last night that we were shoving this down people's throats at the last minute. This was a four-year process, so there was nothing last minute about it. And I just really wanted to commend them all on their work for it. And then just finally, just remind folks that trick-or-treating is this Friday. Please be careful as you're driving around town. And the recommended trick-or-treating hours are from five to eight P M.
Thank you. Alright, we have a couple of certificates to give this evening. The first one is for our retiring cemetery supervisor, Rob G. H. Gladhill. I'm going to read. Should I read the certificate first, or should I do the motion? I'm gonna read it, and then we'll do a motion. Okay. So, a certificate of appreciation to Rob G. H. Gladhill. On this twenty-eighth day of October, 2025, the Stowe Select Board hereby expresses its sincere appreciation to Rob G. H. Gladhill for twenty-five years of service to the Town of Stowe and the Cemetery Department. Hired first for part-time work, G. H., also known affectionately as Groundhog, was made Cemetery Department Foreman in 2001 and promoted to Superintendent in 2003. Since then, he has supervised and maintained Stowe's three cemeteries, some fifteen acres of land, and helped coordinate acquisition of the nine-acre Derby parcel. G. H. has overseen improvements and upgrades, including a gazebo at Brookside Cemetery and a Stonewall Preservation Project at the Lower Village Cemetery. In cooperation with the Historical Commission, the Ancient Documents Committee, and the Community Preservation Committee, G. H. has worked variously to restore old grave markers, photo-document all known grave sites in Lower Village and Hillside Cemeteries, and automate all the old Cemetery Department records. He also provided continuity as the Cemetery Department became part of the Highway Department, and most recently, as both were consolidated into the Department of Public Works. With duties ranging from mowing to answering genealogical inquiries to coordinating burials, G. H. has been known for his cheerful nature and his kindness and compassion for the families he has helped. On behalf of the entire town, the Select Board wishes G. H. a happy retirement, full of peace, contentment, good health, and many new adventures. Sign the Stowe Select Board. Do you have anything to add?
No.
And Dan's?
Nope, just like to wish G. H. well.
Perfect. Do you have any?
No.
Same?
Sorry to see him go.
Alright, I will take a motion.
I move to approve and sign a certificate of appreciation for Rob G. H. Gladhill, who is retiring as Cemetery Supervisor, October 30th.
Second.
Any further discussion? Nope, seeing none, we'll do a roll call. All those in favor, Mr. Costanzos?
Aye.
Ms. Hegeman?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye, that is unanimous. Thank you, G. H., and best of luck. Alright, and we have another certificate of appreciation for the other person sitting in this room, our Library Director, Tina McAndrew. So I'm gonna first read the certificate. A certificate of appreciation to Tina McAndrew. On this twenty-eighth day of October, 2025, the Stowe Select Board hereby expresses its sincere appreciation to Tina McAndrew for her service as Director of Randall Library since 2019. Tina started work in December, 2019, just on the cusp of the COVID-19 pandemic. With social gatherings curtailed and the library physically closed to the public in March, 2020, Tina devised creative ways to supply patrons with books, other materials, and even craft kits by offering curbside pickup. Labeled paper bags festooned the library steps, ready for patrons to drive up and claim them. Zoom programs also helped keep the community connected, and Tina later initiated a doorstep delivery program and established a library of things to augment the library's services. In 2022, Tina enthusiastically spearheaded the library renovation project that was approved at town meeting and coordinated with building committees on design specifications. When bids came back higher than anticipated in 2023, they reexamine goals and modified the design for a second, successful round of bidding. Groundbreaking took place in July, 2024, and renovation got underway with the demolition of the 1970s addition to the original library. Construction has continued to this date, with a new configuration taking shape and visible to all who pass by. On behalf of the entire town, the Select Board wants to thank Tina for the energy, enthusiasm, creativity, and perseverance she has brought to all her duties as Library Director, and wishes her fulfilling and satisfying adventures in her future. Sign the Stowe Select Board. Does anyone have anything they'd like to add?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Definitely, thank you.
I mean, I have enjoyed working with you on a number of things. And I have appreciated your creativity and the way that you have pivoted in a number of situations. And we have been very lucky to have you in this position as a town.
Yeah.
I have a feeling you'll be seeing her again.
Maybe. Do you want to sign, and we can hand it to her?
I don't have a pen.
Do you want to use my pen and sign, so we can hand it to her?
Take all of it.
Motion?
Yeah, let's do a motion!
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
Yeah, I move to approve and sign a certificate of appreciation for Tina McAndrew, Director of Randall Library.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor, Mr. Costanzos?
Aye.
Ms. Hegeman?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye, that is unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
For all of everything. Finish signing it. Sorry. That's not yours. I stood up, it's because I have a terrible signature. Alright. Thank you, my dear.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alrighty.
I have to get on my other meeting.
Hi. Okay. Next up, we have a one-day liquor license. I believe someone is here, John. Is it Logo Messini?
Logo Messi, very nice.
Did I do it right? Oh, fantastic, alright. So, we have a one-day liquor license being requested for an event at the American Heritage Museum. And it looks like all the paperwork is in order, fantastic. Do you want to tell, give us a quick overview as to what you're doing?
Well, this is an event they do every year. This is my first year. I'm part of the Chamber of Commerce in Marlboro, and I've been involved in this for the past couple of years. This is the first year that I'm actually gonna be doing the food and the beverage piece. It's a very worthwhile event. I'm sure you folks are aware of it. I know that it's been going on for, I want to say, five or six years now. So, yeah, it's to honor our veterans. We have a whole bunch of, we actually have some of the Metro West Chamber people coming as well. We're expecting maybe a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty people. So, yeah, it's exciting. It's probably one of the biggest turnouts we've ever had.
That's great. Any board members have questions?
No, I just, not a question, but just a comment. As someone who's attended or visited the Heritage Museum on a field trip, like, amazing facility, you know, so great work to you and all those who helped make this event happen and continue to support the museum.
Yeah, it's an excellent event, and it's so worthwhile. It's so many times that we just need to really appreciate the people that have done so much for this country and support them. And it's just, it's a great experience, it really is. I'm very proud to be a part of it.
Any questions?
Just thank you.
Hector, do you have any questions?
Nope, I'm good, thanks.
Alright, well then, why don't I take a motion, so everyone can move on with their evening?
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. I move to approve a one-day special liquor license for John Logo Messini, Chill Kitchen and Bar, for an event at the American Heritage Museum on Thursday, November 6, 2025, from four to eight P M.
Second.
Any further discussion? Alright, seeing and hearing none, all those in favor, Mr. Costanzos?
Aye.
Ms. Hegeman?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye, that is unanimous. Alrighty, who do we have from the Lions Club here? No one? Okay, so I'll just give you guys a little bit of background. Did we get, oh, the letter's in here, so great. So, the Lions Club had reached out and wanted to, obviously, if you're driven past the sign, it's, the paint's peeling, it's kind of falling apart. And so they had asked whether or not they could fix it. And so we obviously have to have a discussion about whether or not they can fix it, because it's on-town property, blah, blah, blah. So, I think that's the first part of the discussion, and then, I think also I would, I, so, that sign is great, and it's historical, and I just, there is a limitation on how much information you can get on that sign. And I think I would like us to think about whether or not we could look at other town communities. I know Hudson's got a great one. It's a little big. But thinking about the idea of getting a digital sign, it could certainly be in addition to the sign that is the historical one, and maybe putting it on in front of town building. We've had a lot of discussions since COVID about wanting to get information out to people and wanting to make the town aware of things. The big highway department signs are fine for things like voting or whatever they're putting them up. But I do think that like, as we have Apple traffic, as we have tourism, as we have, you know, information that we would like to get to residents in another way quickly, I think that I would like us to, just kind of, I'm just putting it out there. Obviously, this is not anything we can decide tonight. This would be town-maating appropriation of funds, all the things. But I think that as we're having this discussion about allowing the Lions Club to kind of renovate and fix the old sign, to start thinking about what a future sign could also look like. I hope I said that. Quickly as I wanted to.
Well, I guess I'm confused about what sign. Because they said the white sign box.
It's the one that when you are driving, it's, sorry, it's right near the,
Well, there's the new one that we put in just a few years ago.
So, it's that.
Why did you call it historical?
I mean, it's not historical, it's got the like carving on the top of it. Like, it's, 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 sorry.
It's not modern.
It's not modern?
The historical common, maybe.
It's on the historical common, yeah. No, I don't mean that it's, I don't mean that it's historical, that like, it needs to be historically renovated. It's the one that we've, it's in history, we have had that one, that's been our sign. So, I think what they're, what they're asking is to be able to fix it, and I think that's great, because right now, again, the paint is peeling, it looks bad, but.
So, I would just suggest the Town Clerk starts posting, I mean, she starts posting in December for census and dog license stuff. I don't know how long it will take them to refurbish it, but I think as long as it could still be utilized, you know, at least by January, because then we start into town meeting season and all that, so.
They say as much as two weeks, depending on the weather.
Great, yeah. So, did you have anything you wanted to say, Hector?
Yeah, I agree the sign's not necessarily historical, but Lee Heron was the one that did the carvings. And it's, they don't do cart signs like that anymore. Now they're all laser done, and I believe that sign was also gold-gilded by hand by the, so it's a lot of professional work. And I'm glad that the Lions Club is willing to restore it. I agree with you, I'd love to see a digital sign. I know the one in Hudson, though, was put up by the business district, not by the town, I believe. So, it'd be great to look into what we could do for a digital sign. But if they're willing to update it and refurbish it, I thank them more.
I'm just curious, so Denise, you talked about having it be done December, ideally by January. Is it the kind of thing that they, you know, if there was like a very long cold spell or something like that, would that cause any issues or anything like that with the timeline?
I don't know, I mean, possibly when it comes to painting, I don't know. You know, you probably want to paint when it's at least above freezing. I don't, you know, if they can do the work in November, maybe before it gets too cold? If they say two weeks?
The white part would go inside. And just the posts would be restored in place.
Okay.
You'd remove the white sign box for work indoors, including the painting.
Yeah, I mean, this is really the prime time, because obviously, we just had town meeting, and then we won't really need it again until.
Right.
Yep. I think it's, I think it's a great use of,
Energy.
With energy, for sure, absolutely, I think. Because it is, it's a beautiful sign. It's just the underneath part is like falling apart because of rot, so. Alright, anybody else?
I agree that a digital sign, though, just on the record, like, would add it and just complement it, though. Especially if it's like adjacent, I think that's a great idea.
Well, I mean, I did bring this up a few years ago. I would say that I think we would get quite a bit of pushback to put a digital sign on the common. So that's why I think in front of town building would be more appropriate, because there is a historic significance to the common itself. I think there will still be pushback regardless, but I think there will be more so if we look to put it on the common.
Just because of the location, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Alright, then I will take a motion on this.
I move to allow the Stowe Lions Club to repair and refurbish the town sign on the common.
Second, with thanks.
Any further discussion? Alright, seeing and hearing none, all those in favor, Mr. Costanzos?
Well, thankful.
And actually, David Gray just got on, so let me.
Let's move it on. Drag this on. Just vote.
Alright, Ms. Hegeman?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Alright, and the Chair votes aye, that is unanimous. Okay, great. Hopefully, can someone be in touch with them to let them know? Okay, fantastic, thank you. Alright, so our next.
You just unmuted yourself.
Sorry. Yeah, David, thank you. We just voted that it would be great for you all to take care of, and we are very thankful that you are willing to take care and repair and refurbish the town sign.
Yeah, I hope we can get to it this fall, but it may be warmer weather before we can get to it. But we will do the quickest job we can.
So, Dave, I'll just have you coordinate with my office, just so that we can work around the Town Clerk schedule and the town's schedule for when we post stuff. So when you're planning to start work on it, just reach out, and we'll coordinate that.
Oh, yes. Yeah, yeah, we definitely would.
Thank you. Alright, great, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Um, okay, so next we have the Historical Commission on to discuss disposal of artifacts.
And you have Stacey.
And Stacey is on.
I'm here.
Hi, how are you?
Denise, do you want me to, can I share my screen? I don't know how this setup works, or if it's better if you share this.
I can make you co-host, and you can share, just so that you can flip through your own slides. Okay.
Yeah, I went and made the slides fancy with animations and stuff, and then thought, this will be really inconvenient for anyone else to control. So, that's on me.
Thank you.
Alright, let's see, okay. Can you all see that?
Yes, yep.
Nope.
Great. So, I'm Stacey Goldman, I'm a member of the Historical Commission here in town. And also, just as like a little background on me, I worked, or I worked for about fifteen years specifically in local history, and my last job was as a curator at a local history museum, so I've handled a lot of artifacts. So, I'm coming from a place where, you know, I have a little bit of experience with this, just so that you know, you know, where my background, where I'm coming from. So, we have a number of artifacts in the town that are currently mostly being held in the town building. Not the town building, the town hall. They were largely moved out of the library, although some of them were already in town hall. But I want to talk about some of the issues that are facing the collection that the town holds. So we have some general issues. The first one is who? So, the responsibility for these artifact collections is actually pretty muddy. A lot of these artifacts were specifically donated to the library a hundred, more than a hundred years ago, which was a very, very common thing to do. At the turn of the twentieth century, the library would become sort of a de facto collecting historical society for a town. So technically, most of what we have belongs to the library. The library clearly is not interested in, you know, being the primary caregivers of these artifacts, and I don't entirely blame them. They've also sort of fallen in the Historical Commission's lap, and the Historical Commission can also maintain artifacts, but it's not generally the primary role of a Historical Commission. We're mostly interested in the built environment of the town. So it's a little bit muddy there, who takes care of them? So what? Some of the items that we've inventoried, or that were on past inventories that can be found in old town reports, things along those lines, which is where a lot of the information about these artifacts come from, have not actually been located or identified. I have a list of some two hundred objects, which have been primarily located, but I would say at least fifty of them, we don't know where they are. The last we heard, and these are all apocryphal things, but they were in the attic of the town building, which Denise tells me isn't really a thing, or in other various places. So, we don't actually have our hands on everything, we don't really know where everything is. So we can't even verify that the town has ownership of all the objects that we're supposed to have ownership of. Right, how? So our artifacts that we have right now are not really being kept according to best practices and standards. So if this was a museum setting, which obviously it isn't, all of the artifacts should be kept in basically archival boxes, using entirely archival materials, to keep them from deteriorating, or when they're packed up in a box, from interacting with each other in a way that would cause them to cause each other harm. So you don't want to put metal in a box with wood, because actually, the metal can cause the wood to break down, and the acids in the wood can start to etch the metal. So, you know, you need to think about that when you're storing things. Right now, they're just kind of kept in boxes, they were moved in a really rushed way out of the library. So we didn't want, you know, we didn't want the perfect to be the enemy of the good. They're packed up and they're safe, but long-term, this is not a good storage solution for them. And also, there's just not really, we don't necessarily have the budget and the facilities to take care of all of these items. Why? So this is like a big question for me, and this is always a big question for me when I'm looking at a museum collection in general. Why do you have a specific artifact? And something can be old, but not actually be of historical significance for your purposes. So the town artifacts that we're keeping right now, they're not currently being displayed, they're not serving the public. Even if you have something that is historically significant, if you're not making it available to the public, why do you have it at all, right? These are things that actually should be made available for people to view, for them to interact with, for them to learn from. Keeping them locked up is not really, you know, then you're just wasting your space and your resources on those objects. So you want to keep them for the public good. And right now, we don't have any places bookmarked or earmarked for that purpose, so people just aren't seeing them. Then we have some, oh, yes, all of these issues can be resolved. These are all very easily resolved issues. Sorry, I forgot I had this optimistic little thing at the bottom here. And they really can be, it's, you know, none of this is stuff that we can't solve. I think we just need either the manpower, the space, you know, sort of the wherewithal, maybe some resources to make it happen. Alright, so we're gonna move on to some specific issues. So the one, the last slide was primarily the general questions that's around keeping an artifact collection. These are the specific issues that face the collection that is in Stowe's possession right now. So the first one is that many of the items are not really of great historic value. We have a lot of old china sets, which was a very, very common thing for people to donate when they were making donations like this to their local library for history, for historical purposes. If you were a person in nineteen hundred, and someone said, donate your historical items, if it was old, it was significant. And that's actually not really the standard of museum keeping anymore. Your items should be significant, because it should be telling a story. And so we have things that are old, but they're not of historic value, they're not telling us stories. Some of the items are not even from Stowe. We have things from Acton, we have something someone found in the dump in Concord. We have something that someone like went on vacation to Colorado and brought back. So, you know, they're not even telling really local stories. And we don't have, something from far away can tell an interesting local story, but you have to have enough information around it to know why it's telling an interesting story. And we don't have that information. So we don't know like that this person from Stowe went out west and became a prospector, and that's why they brought a gold nugget back, and they made their fortune, and then, you know, bestowed it on the town. Like, we don't know any of that. It's just someone went to Colorado, brought back a gold nugget, what does that say about Stowe? It doesn't say anything. Some items may contain hazardous materials. So there is at least one doctor's kit in this collection, and it's a historic doctor's kit from a Stowe doctor, which is a very interesting and honestly incredible artifact. Like, that's a great piece of material that you can use to teach people. Unfortunately, it Unfortunately, it does still have historic medicines in it, which might mean that it contains hazardous materials. Because medicines from, you know, I mean, I, we should probably shouldn't be keeping any medicines, but if we're talking from the time period that this doctor's kit came from, a nineteenth century doctor's kit, that could include arsenic, laudanum, all kinds of dangerous materials that have just been sitting in little vials for a long time. And we should probably dispose of them. You can still tell a cool story about this doctor without having hazardous materials in your possession. Some items are made of problematic materials, and the biggest one that we'll see is ivory. So ivory is a really problematic material, because there are all kinds of uh, strict state and federal regulations around the keeping of ivory. There are definitely, um, there are definitely sort of like loopholes that exist in laws for museums and historic artifacts. I think if you can prove that the ivory is from before nineteen twenty, I've dealt with ivory collections before, and I, so I, I'm, I felt a little burned by them actually. Um, if you can prove that the ivory is from before nineteen twenty, technically, it's legal to possess. But really, actually, it's a huge challenge anyway. Um, and then it's also really challenging to maintain. So, you know, it, when I worked um, at the Framingham History Center as the curator, we we deaccessioned a huge collection that had a lot of ivory in it, and nobody would touch the ivory. So we had to like, it was like ivory with little metal pieces in it, and we had to remove all the metal pieces and take all the ivory back, and we sold only the metal pieces. And then we had to send uh, the ivory off to be destroyed. Um, so, this is just something that we really need to be thinking carefully if we have in the town's possession. And some items may be of Native American or foreign origin, and those items should definitely be repatriated. Many of these items have not been positively identified. Um, some of them, I don't know where they are. Um, some of them may actually not be of particular or significant cultural value. Repatriation is a really complicated subject. Um, mainly because a lot of times, you know, it's not, it's not always an issue to repatriate something if it's a projectile point that was dug up on a farm. But if it's of significant cultural value, it's, if it's of important funerary value, all these kinds of things, those items without a doubt need to be repatriated. So more research really needs to be done on the items like that in the list. And the ones that we don't, we don't know where they are, we need to at least make a good effort to find them. So, um, the Historical Commission has been reviewing all of these things, and we have a couple of recommendations that we want to make regarding these collections, you know, going forward into the future. So the first one is that we should maintain some of these collections. And, um, you know, Denise and I had a, a good talk about this. Um, some of these items, you know, are are of important historical significance. We don't want them to be lost to the town. Um, and right now, there is not another organization in town that is well suited to accept them and to care for them and to display them. That doesn't mean there won't be at some point. But you know, the his, the local historical society doesn't currently have, um, like a physical space. Um, so maintaining collections is also going to be challenging for them. And also, some of these items may be included on the town's insurance, and so that has to be carefully considered. We can't just get rid of everything, it doesn't really make a lot of sense for us. Uh, so we should maintain some artifacts that are of historic significance and value, or that should be kept by the municipality for obvious legal and safety reasons. So we have things like firearms that were in the collection that, you know, for obvious reasons, we don't want to be sending, even though they're historic firearms that are that take like a full forty seconds to load, and you need to have all kinds of really specialty equipment to make it happen. We shouldn't just be giving away, you know, a musket. Uh, we should probably keep that with the police department. Um, we'd like to see support for future display of the objects that are maintained, and support for proper care and storage of the objects. Next is dispose. So the town, we do think that the town should dispose of objects that are of little or no value, or that require safe disposition, say, you know, a hazardous material, a little vial of whatever little arsenic chemical a doctor might have thought was helpful in eighteen seventy. Um, and uh, we can assess and work with Denise for the appropriate disposition on a case-by-case basis. Because disposing of ivory as opposed to disposing of, um, you know, uh, hazardous material as opposed to disposing of china that's just not historically significant, those are, those have to go to three wildly different places. So this is gonna be sort of a slow step-by-step process. Um, and the Historical Commission can, you know, if this, you know, if the select board wants to see them, submit reports before acting on disposition plans. Really, however you guys want to handle that, sort of will work for us. Um, and then going on, we want to make sure that we keep revisiting and reassessing the collections. So, if we're going to be keeping these items, we should regularly revisit them, and we should be assessing their maintenance. Um, and we should be assessing whether they're, you know, if we're not going to be displaying them, if we can't coordinate a way to keep these for the public good, should we keep them at all? Um, and is there at that point in time another repository that is more appropriate and that is well suited to take these collection items? So, you know, we're not saying let's just get rid of everything in the town's collection right away. Um, and maybe never get rid of everything, uh, but we should be revisiting this as an ongoing process. Uh, that is my last slide. We'll stop the share. I am happy to answer absolutely any questions that you have about this.
Um, Hector, you have a hand up?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, it didn't appear correct, uh, completely. That doctor's bag, for example, you said you could keep the doctor's bag, but get rid of the medicine vials?
Yeah, so it's possible, and that's another one that in Framingham, we had a, we also had a historic doctor's bag. So, you can keep the bag, you can keep, the doctor's bag doesn't only have medicine in it, it also has various tools and things of that nature, and you can maybe even, depending what's in the vials. So, you know, if they're not, they're not all well labeled, so some of them might have to be tested. Um, or we may just say they're all hazardous, let's just, let's just dispose of them safely. Um, but we might be able to keep a couple of vials while disposing of the items inside the vials. But the bag is still definitely of value, there's a lot more in there, more than just the medicine, but the medicine is obviously a problem.
Right.
Okay. Any questions?
No, I mean, I guess yes. In, do we, does the, does the select board need to see reports on proposed disposal?
So, I think the reason it's being brought to us is essentially because we are responsible for disposal of town property and this is town property. Oh, no, well, no, so the next part of that is, is that something the select board would want to see?
That's the question I'm asking.
Um, so.
We'll get there.
Um, yeah, I mean, I think, um, I think I would want to see it in the way that like we get reports on, uh, there's a copier that's get, that we're disposing of, or what, like, not a report-report, but just kind of a list of the things that are going.
Okay.
Um, I, I mean, I think that's, I would feel comfortable with something like that, just, I, I don't, we don't need a presentation every time that, that, that something needs to be, um, because then what is the point of allowing the Historical Commission to do their job?
Right.
Um, but I do think it's probably worth at least having a list of things and, um, just maybe like a we got rid of this because of, we saw that it had no historical value, or whatever. Um, I think that's just good record-keeping for the future. Um, so that's, that's what I think I would want to see. Um, but yeah.
Uh, on a, on a fine point, specific point, um, do you have a date, Stacey, on the ivory acquisition? Like, is it post nineteen twenty, before nineteen twenty? And if it is before nineteen twenty, is there a museum in Eastern Massachusetts that would even, you know, hold or want, desire something like that?
Um, that is a great question. So the, what I have for the ivory that I know of, let's see, this one was donated, it, so it was in the annual town report in nineteen twelve. So that's a pretty strong evidence that it was here before nineteen twenty. Um, let's see, and a lot of that is all in, a lot of the ivories in the same report. Um, they are, they are also primarily African artifacts. So that's also sort of its own thing. Um, but primarily, they're found in that report. There are, I think, um, so we can prove that they're from before nineteen twenty. I think whether we think that, that Stowe is the appropriate place for them or not is another question. I don't know who would be specifically in Eastern Massachusetts. I'd have to do some more research into that to find out.
Yeah.
I think a lot of places, I will say, if if it was me and I was the curator, and someone came to me and said, I have this collection of ivory artifacts that seems suitable for your collection, I would probably say no, because of a number of challenges. Not everyone would. Um, so it's certainly worth it to reach out to someone, if there is someone who would take this kind of thing. Um, and find out first, but largely, uh, ivory is, the, the problem with ivory is not just that it's a problematic material, but that it's just so hard to maintain. You need really perfect humidity and heat control, which is just like not, which is, you know, certainly, we don't have the ability to do, but if there is a larger organization around that is well suited to it, maybe, honestly, maybe, maybe like an art museum might.
Um, well, the reason I ask, I, I understand like the ethical, uh, questions and problematic nature of it. I, I guess in my head, it, and I, I don't think you specified how it would be disposed or how it would be handled, but having some sort of like, you know, productive use of it would, in my mind, be better than sort of disposal. But I, 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 maybe I'm wrong in that.
Yeah, well, I think it really depends on the situation. I would definitely, um, if, if we were to attempt to find another place to keep them, I would definitely not recommend selling them to another museum. Um, it's a real prob, that's a real problem, creating any kind of selling market, sales market for ivory, no matter how old the ivory is, is a real problem. Um, and, and honestly, most people won't pay. Or people, you know, people who are working above board, uh, will be willing to pay. Um, and so, I think, you know, if we were to find, I think, I, I think looking at the items, I'd have to look at the items again, I haven't seen them in some time. I would maybe consider starting with an art museum and donating them to an art museum, that seems like it would be a possibility. Uh, we'd have to go down the line. I think ivory is one of the ones where you have to go down the line. There's a line, like, the ideal thing is give it to another museum. And then after that, you know, if it's not ivory, you know, sell it at public auction or in some public forum, and below that, you know, you have like a, a tiered system, and you'd probably have to go down the tiers to see how far you have to go. Um, before you reach the point where either we just have to hold on to it, which is to the detriment of our own resources, or we send it off to be destroyed. I think that's sort of where it is. And, you know, not to sound, um, this is going to sound callous, and it's not because I care very deeply about historic artifacts, and, you know, spent a lot of time thinking about this professionally. But sometimes accepting that an item from your collection is actually to be disposed of in a way that is disposal, garbage, destruction, something like that, sometimes that's just the nature of things. Um, and you have a better, stronger, nimbler, more meaningful collection left behind when you sort of make those exceptions, or you accept those things rather. Um, so, I wouldn't immediately send it off to be destroyed, but, you know.
I, I don't.
You have to think about it carefully.
I, I don't, I don't think that's, that's callous, I think ultimately like, and I, I don't, I don't mean to harp on like the one-eyed line item, I just thought that was like an interesting matter, and I, I just want, want to be respectful as you've been alluding to with whatever we do. Um, the only other thing I would just want to echo what, uh, Engleborg was saying about um, having periodic updates or that sort of thing. I think like your recommendations have been thorough and detailed and, um, I really appreciate, uh, you know, your presentation. Um, I guess, I'm wondering like if there's some sort of like timeline, like every few months or every large tranche of items that you have, um, or some sort of way to not just say, yes, we're going to, you know, agree, agree to what's being said and not review or revisit down the line?
Yeah, so we hadn't said anything specifically, we don't have anything in mind timeline-wise. Um, I think, you know, my general thought, also when I said like we can give you reports, I was thinking like we can give you a list.
Yeah.
I wasn't thinking like that, I was looking through this whole thing every time.
Yep.
Um, and I think some of these may be slower for us to figure out where they need to go than others. So, you know, it's gonna be sort of a, a fits and starts kind of thing, and I think maybe we'll start with the easy stuff.
Yeah.
When we figure out where to send all the easy stuff, we can send it along to you. Um, and then, uh, but if you want to see it on a certain timeline or schedule, you know, we're, we're totally open to that. Just, you know, we, we had not said anything specific.
I, I think I would defer to the town administrator. When they present you with stuff, then you would just bring it to put on, on, on agenda.
Yeah, I think that's fine. I think, um, as, as we work together, I'll just keep you informed and make sure you have the list of whatever the next cycle of items are.
Right.
And then if anytime you want to talk to them about it, we can just schedule them to come in or discuss the specific items.
Okay, sounds great. Um, alright, anybody else? No? Okay.
Hector.
Oh, Hector, yep.
Uh, going back to the ivory's items, you mentioned that they are of, um, African origin. Have you been in touch with the Worcester Black History Project or the Museum of African-American History in Boston?
I have not, um.
They may be interested in?
Yeah, I have not specifically, um, and that is a, that's a good question. They are, I'm gonna have to see if I can find this town report, because the, um, I'm gonna have to see if I can find this town report, if there's more information. Generally, there isn't more information. They're all just listed as African artifacts from Lewis Parks. And that makes me think that he, and actually, the first, the first thing is called African Curios, which makes me think that he went to Africa, and that they are directly from there as a result of some form of, you know, tourism, or, you know, going on a hunt or something like that, of that nature. Um, but I think in general, more information should be, we should definitely look into it more into the history of these items, but I, I haven't, I haven't been in touch specifically with any African-American history museums.
And also, uh, I know you said that there's a lot of Native American artifacts that, and I'm assuming you're looking into seeing if they need to be repatriated with, uh, local.
Yeah, that's on the list, so that they're, they are bookmarked on the list of, of the sort of, we have a problem, a list of problematic items. And so, the ivory and, and ev- everything from Africa, even the stuff that's not ivory, and the Native American artifacts, although not, most of them actually, the Native American artifacts have not been found. They're on a list from items that were uh, in the town's possession at one point, and it must be recent enough that somebody was able to number them. Uh, someone, I think in the Historical Society numbered them, because there was a sort of confusing mixing of Historical Society objects and town objects for a long time. Um, and so, I, I think some of them, there's at least one that's like listed as a coat. That, you know, if, if, there is no evidence of this coat still being around, but if we can find it, it certainly seems like it should, it's something that should probably be repatriated. And there are two baskets, um, which were made in Stowe, um, which may have been, uh, a purchase or sort of specifically made for sale to like local white people. Um, so, that's something that, you know, may not be of like significant, of, of cultural significance, or it may be. I don't, you know, finding them is, we need to find them, is, is the main part. Um, so that we can actually assess them. But when we find them, the first thing that I would want to do is call the, the Hasnemisco Knit Muck and have them look at them for us, and consider taking them if, if they're, if they're of significance.
Well, thank you for your due diligence.
Alright, um, I'm ready for a motion.
I move to accept the recommendations of the Historical Commission as a process for handling, transferring, maintaining, and disposal of artifacts for the benefit of the artifacts themselves, Stowe, and the greater community.
Second, but I do have a question.
Yep, any further discussion, Engleborg?
So, on the recommendation, it was a question mark, so are we saying, go up, go up, up?
Oh, sorry.
No, up the other way.
Yep. Yep.
Right there.
Yep.
So it says if, it's a, on um on a case by case historical, can submit reports. Um yeah, okay, then that's fine. I thought it said it was more of a question, so that's fine then.
All right.
No further comment.
Okay, any comments?
And we don't wanna do, oh, sorry. I was just gonna say, I, I understand not saying like, you know, once a month or every six months or whatever.
I don't think so. I think it's on their schedule.
On their schedule.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I do. Um cause it could take her six months to talk to one, do you, like, I, yeah, I think it's.
I just, I wouldn't. I don't, I don't anticipate this. I'm just, I'm wondering if it would be like years or multiple years and it's like, oh, I have everything and that's all.
Yeah.
Doesn't matter. It's their schedule.
I think, I think it's theirs.
Okay.
Um, okay, uh.
Yeah.
Um.
For your sake.
All right, um all those in favor, Mr. Costanzos?
Aye.
Uh Ms. Hagman?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, so that is unanimous. Okay.
Can I just get that one, the meeting's over, cause I wasn't able to write the whole motion down?
Yes, absolutely.
I'll grab it at the end. Thank you.
You gotta finish writing that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Um hi, uh Ms. Serge is here to talk to us about, uh to give uh her quick last report as we were all at town meeting last night. Um and uh yeah, I'm gonna just give you the floor about per- perambulation.
Yeah.
Can I, do you want me to show anything?
Um.
Or you're just gonna talk?
I think, yeah.
Um so it's, it's more that, you know, when we finally got the perambulation, that we're supposed to do it every five years for people who don't know, it's, it's marking the town boundaries. Um it's supposed to, it's in the bylaws, it's in state legislature to do it every five years. Because of COVID, it took us a lot longer last time. Um I think it was eight days that, eight different days we went out and there was a smaller and smaller group because it was too complicated. Um it really shouldn't take that long. Uh we, so I put together the, basically a slideshow PDF of all the sites we found because we were having a hard time historically. Some people kept it, some people didn't. Um we do have GPS coordinates for everything. There's a master map on the front that um Greg Troxel has tracked. Um I don't have it on my phone. I have the file from Greg. Uh we can use it again. It definitely makes it easier. Sometimes the, the GPS coordinate is the actual boundary marker, not where, uh boundary point, but not where the marker is. And that's what we tried to make sure we recorded so that at least we knew where we were looking as opposed to looking right where the border was supposed to be. Um there's really only two major problems that we discovered over the last round. Um or maybe three. One, the property owner had moved the border because he didn't realize it was actually a monument for the border. He thought it was just a decorative thing in his driveway and um he didn't like it, but he moved it back. Or actually, I guess we got highway, there was some agreement. They moved it back. Um there was just a couple that, um one has been taken many years ago and unclear where it disappeared to. Another one that's basically in the middle of the road. Um so some work, we started to work with Hudson, I think, on one of them and then their town manager left and that was that, so.
That's the one in the water?
No, that was, um it's the one uh that was, I think, in the middle of the road.
Oh, great, okay, yeah.
So, so really, it's, you know, it's getting to the end of twenty five. I realized we started doing it in November, which I'd forgotten. Um cause you don't wanna do it when the snow flies. Um but it's really just coordinating like a cou, you know, we, some, some groups as we saw, you know, we had eight or nine people at the beginning and then we were down to three and then we were down to, well, I guess we were down to three. Um there's no requirement really. It really should be a member of the select board and then whoever from the town wants to join in. Um and that's really, I mean, I'm willing to do it again because I actually think it's a blast. That, that was my second time doing it and um we do have the, the information. We just need to get the GPS machine with us. And we talked last night briefly about getting an intern who has fun with GPS or wants to do that stuff. But anybody who wants to do it, you know, might be, think it's fun, so.
I will happily volunteer to do it again. It was a lot of fun.
It was fun.
And I, I don't know, I just, I'm always seeing them now, right?
Right.
Um so.
It makes you very aware of.
Makes you very aware of where your town bounds are. Uh so, okay, so we, wait, did you take my motions? I need that.
I don't know.
No, no, there's notes. Um so we, we're gonna accept your report. Or we're gonna mo- move to do that. But um do you want to coordinate? I guess next steps are setting up the, the thing, trying to figure out who wants to, um I mean, certainly anybody else who wants to come along.
Yeah.
Um.
Hector's seen this up.
Hector, absolutely. It's super fun. Um so yeah, if you wanna coordinate with Denise and then Denise can
Okay.
coordinate with us about that, that would work.
Yeah, and I would say we get it done in two days.
I think we can get it done in two days. I think you're absolutely right. COVID was difficult because there was social distancing. Everybody was masked. It was like, it, it was a production.
Right.
Um and uh yeah, I think it's, I think it's easy enough to knock out in a couple of days.
Do you want volunteers in the community as well? Am I putting out a call for people who wanna participate?
I mean, I think, I think so just because it's something that, I think there are a couple of people who have done it.
Yeah, that's true.
Every, like, uh, you know, a few times and would like to, to do it again, so.
So once you have a date, I'll, I won't like solicit, just, I'll just say, this, these are the dates and
Okay.
Yeah.
That way it's easier for people that are available.
Yeah, just do it that way, right.
So what, and I would say like, if you wanna kind of just come up with the dates and then we'll see who can a- attend from that. Um I think, will you do the corresponding with the property owners?
That's, I mean, that, we'll have to see. We might need to share that cause that's, that was the big part was to capture who we're supposed to call.
Right.
And that changed in some cases, so.
I, we can do that in my office if need be. If you have a list.
Okay, okay.
That's great.
You can just hand that off. Again, once we have the dates, give me the information and I'll have the staff make calls.
That's fantastic.
Yeah, there's only one gate that needs to be unlocked and I would call them across the jerseys.
Right, that's right. Everything else is just letting them know where you want to. Letting them know you're on your property, right.
Yeah.
Um all right, fantastic. Um then.
There is one, um.
Oh, right, so this.
There was one that was hit by a car apparently two years ago. Um and DPW had a surveyor come out and re-identify, so it was in the middle of a driveway. But they've moved it off to the side, but they wanted to make sure we had the exact location of where it should be.
Yes, I have to talk to the property owners. I know them, so yes.
Okay, fantastic. So we've just got that for record.
One of the scariest places, cause it's on Red Acre Road on the bend. So it's like, you don't really wanna be there painting the little stone anyway, but yeah, okay.
Um all right, fantastic. Then I will take a motion to, yeah.
I move to accept the twenty twenty town bounds perambulation report as presented at this meeting by Ellen Serge.
Second.
Uh any further discussion? All right, seeing and hearing none. All those in favor, Mr. Costanzos?
Aye.
Ms. Hagman?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Um so that is unanimous. And then do you want us to move to, to do the, anything else? We don't have to, right? We're just having this discussion.
I think we're just having this discussion.
Okay, fantastic.
Yeah.
Thank you again for spearheading this. This is, um, it is, it's one of the, I don't know, it's one of the quirky, weird little things about Massachusetts.
This store is so passionate about it, which is what's funny. Most towns couldn't care less, but.
Yeah, and I would say, I mean, certainly, I mean, I know you do, but take pictures. We'll post it on social media, get, you know, let people know that this is done.
Yes.
This is the first town I've worked in that's ever done it, so.
That's so funny.
I know it's supposed to happen, but it doesn't, so it's, it's cool.
And you go past some of the stones, especially the ones that are visible and you're, what the heck are all those numbers on it?
Yeah, you're like, who, yeah, who um vandalized that, but no, it's cool, so. Thank you.
Cool, good.
Awesome.
All right.
Alrighty, uh next order of business is uh meeting minutes, which are somewhere. Um. Anybody have any questions, concerns?
No concerns.
Do we just want to move them? Great, um let's go.
I, I move to accept the meeting minutes of the October fourteenth, twenty twenty five meeting.
Second.
All right, um any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor, Mr. Costanzos?
Aye.
Ms. Hagman?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, that is unanimous. Uh.
Before you get to correspondence, I just wanna remind you all, we are meeting next Tuesday.
Hi.
Uh we are meeting next Tuesday because the Tuesday afterwards Veterans Day, so you voted to move up the meeting. So we are meeting next Tuesday and then not again until, I think, November twenty fifth, so just as a reminder.
I may, I have.
Yep.
I'll be honest, at this moment, we have one thing on the agenda.
So as long as there's a quorum, I should, I need to go to the end.
Uh hopefully our board member makes it back from the Caribbean cruise.
Well, as long as there's three of us.
As long as there's three of us.
Right.
Even if you're on Zoom.
All right.
All right, um.
Thanksgiving.
Anything else? Any, there's a lot of correspondence.
Laurie Trahan's response was nice.
That wasn't nice. Um.
She's nice.
All right. Anything, Hector?
I, the, I was trying to figure out what was all this discussion about motorcycles? Is that in it we need to look at?
So I would suggest uh we may have to take that into executive session. There is a, an ongoing legal um matter. Um so the, the letter that you have is a resident alleging that police department are not doing their job and are looking for us to investigate. Uh the police department have done their job to the best of their, their ability, turned it over and actually attempted to file charges at the Concord Court. The court said, we're not filing it. It's a civil matter. It should not come before us through the police department. The residents are not happy. Um this has been going on for quite some time. Um they have reported the matter to Post, the Post Commission. The Post Commission has said it does not fall in their purview. Their police department have done nothing wrong. Um I did wanna make sure you were aware of it. It did come to you uh which is why it's included and then the chief's response is included. But um I, I don't think there's much action we need to take on that.
Yeah, I thought the chief's response answered all the questions, but.
Yes.
Yeah.
Perfect. That's it.
All right, um nobody else, somebody else? All right, I'll take the final motion.
Uh I move to adjourn tonight's meeting.
Second.
Um all those in favor, Mr. Costanzos? Ms. Hagman?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. That is unanimous. That is the end of our meeting. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Bye.
Bye. Oh wow, it's just us.
Just us.